Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, I'm gonna pop, it's amazing, the magic of Zoom. I'm gonna pop over to the Safe Parking Community Meeting and I'll pop back and forth between the two.
We'll do what you must, thank you.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are ready to start the meeting, although I'm looking at the attendees and I see that the first applicant has not arrived yet.
Okay, well, we will go through getting our meeting kicked off and hopefully they've joined, and if not, we'll just move down the ladder. All right, it is 6:02 PM on Monday, August 31st. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. If a clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Here.
Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo? Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo let us know she might be a little late as she's in a meeting with our supervisor. Okay, we have one item today, interviews of candidates for the Human Relations Commission and the Public Art Commission. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I'm assuming not, but let's just check.
There are no members of the public. There is one raised hand, but I see that it's an applicant.
Okay. So Ms. Lunt, I don't know exactly how we're planning to do this, if we're gonna bring them in as a panelist and show their video, is that the plan?
That's exactly what's gonna happen. I'm going to promote each of the candidates as a panelist, then that will allow them to turn their audio and video on. And then, once they're done speaking, I'll stop that and then just proceed through the list. And then, you mentioned earlier, you would do a private timer.
I will, I'll use my phone here. So let's start with the first candidate for the Human Relations Commission, Sunita De Torrell, and apologies if I mispronounced your name.
So the first candidate, actually, Mr. Mayor, is Nilofer Cholompit. At the 6:00 PM candidate.
Hey, I've got a list from you guys showing Sunita first.
I have the same.
I think, I think Jessica sent this maybe an hour ago, but...
Okay, does it say 6:00 PM next to that person?
Sunita, 6:00 PM, Nilofer, 6:20.
Okay, I must have an outdated list. So Sunita is here and I will promote her to panelist right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sunita, you are muted as of right now, so go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Sunita. We can't... Welcome, I'm Adrian, these are my fellow councilmembers. Thank you so much for applying to the Human Relations Commission. We really appreciate each and every applicant. So we wanted you a couple of minutes to just share a bit about yourself, about your application and interest for this commission, and then I'll go to my colleagues who may have questions for you, and then we'll give you a moment or two to wrap up, and we've got 10 minutes. So if you want to kick us off, it's all yours.
Great, thank you. All right, to my opening statement. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for this interview. My name is Sunita De Tuhaii, and I've been living in Palo Alto for the past 14 years. Palo Alto is where I've been raising my two children and where I send them to school. I'm a single mom living in the downtown area, and in recent years, I've become more involved with local community efforts such as Cool Block, including Gold Block. I started and ran a business in Palo Alto, downtown Palo Alto, for eight years. In addition to being transactional, what we did best was to build local communities. The business, in case it's interesting, is the Chocolate Garage. Before becoming a social entrepreneur, I was a molecular biologist and worked with a Nobel Laureate at UC San Francisco, as well as kidney cancer and kids at the Montreal General Hospital prior to that. All the jobs I've taken on have meant steep learning curves, and this is where I thrive. I bring an analytical mind to all that I do, but I think the single most important skill I've brought to all that I do is empathy and openness to others' experiences. I'm biracial, I'm born to a Swiss man and a South Indian woman, an unlikely combination, and raised in Canada. I can't help but see the world from a wide lens and listen with compassion to differing viewpoints. These are the key skills that I would bring to the HRC if selected to fill the one vacant position. And I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you so much, great opening. I see Councilmember Niss first, and to my colleagues, if you have questions, please just hit your hand.
Welcome, it's so nice to have you apply. I went to the Chocolate Factory many times. I was doubly fascinated because, given your background, and in my only trip to South America, I remember buying chocolate. So, give us an idea of how that background, that is so diverse, you know, your background as a person, your background as a traveler, and you said you also led trips. Describe a little how that really informs you to serve on this commission.
Sure. I think that in all the capacities that I've worked on, so either as an entrepreneur in downtown Palo Alto, connecting with customers and building community and sort of bringing more empathy to purchasing decisions, which is really what the Chocolate Garage was about. I think listening to people and understanding different ways and different viewpoints and different sort of values that people hold was really critical, certainly for the Chocolate Garage. And my understanding of the HRC is really to be able to be a voice and represent those folks in Palo Alto who are being left out and not accessing all the different opportunities that are available for all. And so I think that partly due to the Chocolate Garage and my, you know, deep sort of network, I suppose, we call it that in the valley, I have a sense of the variation and the diversity that there is in Palo Alto. And so I think that brings a lot of strength to, potentially to the HRC. And then, the background of just, you know, the scientific research, certainly that's very, it demonstrates an ability to sort of look at different situations, look at the data, look, understand what what the needs are in a particular community, and then try to, you know, parse all that data and come up with conclusions. So mixing those two things, the analytical, as well as the being able to interact with folks and really listen and connect and bring empathy, both to patients as well as to customers at the Chocolate Garage, they were not my patients, although some of them would have said that chocolate was medicine for them. So I think that that different, that varied background and then all the travel that I do, I lead trips and bring people to other parts of the world, speaking different languages, helping them understand cultures, I think that really lends as well to my ability to understand that people come with very different motivations and very different values, and being able to listen to that and represent that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mary Fine, good evening, Mr. Torrey, we're very happy to have you. Take a minute to think about the people you've worked with in your professional and volunteer and personal life. What two words would they use to describe you and how you do your work?
I guess I would say big-hearted and caring, that's not a single word, but that's the first word. I actually got in trouble for that when I worked at UCSF because I spent too much time with patients, but I felt that was important. And then, dedicated. I think dedicated as well, throwing myself into work and really bringing my energy and my resources to do the task at hand.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Cormac. Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yeah, hi, thanks for applying. Two quick questions, I guess. One, where are you working today? And then, two, what do you think the city should do about people living in vehicles?
I am, so my business has been put on pause. I have a luxury travel business where I bring people to cocoa origins and chocolate-making countries, and which obviously right now is been put on pause. I canceled my trip to Vietnam just two weeks before we were leaving in March. So currently, I'm waiting to start planning future trips. What do I think we should do, Palo Alto should do about people living in cars? Or vehicle, generally speaking, or just cars? RVs as well, or?
Vehicles, yes.
Wow, I think that's a really really good and tough question. I, I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure what the solution is. I understand that there are issues of, you know, on the one hand, for folks who are living here not in vehicles, there's issues of feelings of concern or the, you know, the consequences of people living in their cars and potentially leaving behind things. I live in downtown and there used to be somebody living in the downtown library parking lot that I was very familiar with and would see. So I understand that point of view, but I also think that I definitely understand how difficult it is to live in this area. And I think that I personally know some of my ex-customers who are right now just getting by with the makeshift jobs at Stanford and living in their, I know one woman who's living in her car. She's a lovely woman, she contributes in beautiful ways and is a wonderful member of the community and can't pay her rent anymore, so I actually can't give you an answer as to what we need to do because I haven't thought about it enough, but I feel like I feel like it's something that's quite complex, and I think that there's probably a way to find a way for different sides to be addressed, for people to be able to try to make a go and live in a place that's actually pretty safe to live, even if you're in your vehicle, compared to maybe other parts of the Bay Area. But then also sort of figure out how do we make that not impactful or disturbing, I suppose, to folks who feel unsafe if there's people living in their cars. So I guess it's a non-answer, but I think it's probably a pretty tough one.
It is a tough question, so thank you. Interesting to hear how you thought about it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes, Sunita, thank you for applying. I love your background. So, as you probably know, with COVID-19, there's been pretty big impacts downtown with retailers and restaurants. And given that you were a retail business with the Chocolate Garage, what is your thoughts about, how do we handle this devastation that's going on in the small business community, right? So many of these restaurants, retailers are closing, right, forever, right? And, you know, cities struggling to try to keep these guys afloat, and we have this big issue between, you know, the closed University Avenue Street and then the side streets, and there's a lot of ink store this. What's your thoughts about this? I'd love to get your take as a former retailer.
A previous retailer. A former retailer, I guess. Another easy question, thank you. I'll be honest, when all this happened, part of me was really grateful that I closed my business in the end of 2018 because I don't know how a business that doesn't do online or majority online is supposed to get by right now. Rents are incredibly expensive and overhead and operating costs and all employees, I mean, it's a really, really difficult situation that's been somewhat alleviated by some of the state and governmental supports for folks whose businesses have had to close temporarily. Honestly, I think this is a much bigger problem than COVID. I think this has been a real challenge, and if you look at the past 10, 15 years and what's happened to small business in Palo Alto, it's mostly gone. I mean, we don't have very many mom-and-pop stores anymore. I think COVID is, in many ways, just sort of accelerating and really exposing what already was problematic. If you look at all the new stores coming in, I mean, I guess I'm not super optimistic, having been a small business owner. The new stores coming in are chains, you know, they're ones who can afford to operate in Palo Alto. So I guess I'm really thinking from a very small business point of view for the medium-sized businesses. I don't know, I mean, you know, if it were possible to, I wish we could see this on a larger level, to sort of alleviate the duty to pay rent and somehow pass that on also to the property owners in terms of like mortgages, I mean, this much bigger thing that's not really a Palo Alto-specific sort of legislation, but I wish that that had happened even at the state level so that these small businesses can kind of hang on and get the support they need both for their own overhead as well as for their employees. But I don't know, I don't think that's in the purview of the city. I don't actually necessarily understand how the government works in that sense, but those are things I would hope would happen. But I think this is a very big problem, and I think it's, 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 again, like I said, I'm not super optimistic, maybe because I I had a small business for many years and poured my heart into it and then eventually shuttered it because it just, I couldn't see getting to the place where it was sustainable.
So thank you very much for all those answers and to my colleagues for the questions. We're up at 10 minutes. If you just have kind of one thing you'd like to leave us with?
Sure, I have a quick closing statement that I wrote. So in addition, as I said, to bringing an analytic mind and a high emotional quotient to the table, I believe my multicultural background, as I mentioned, languages are helpful in understanding people's concerns. It seems the Human Relations Commission is tasked to act on matters when the commission finds that any person or group does not benefit fully from opportunities met for all or is unfairly treated due to various factors. I see that there's a kinder and more inclusive ways that are blossoming these days, especially in our local youth, at a national scale as well as locally, and I think we need to include, involve, and listen to our youth and engage them in the problems that they will inherit. I think that would be a great strength, and I would bring that to the table, particularly working with, listening to youth. I believe our cultural diversity is another strength in Palo Alto and ought to be listened to as well. And if appointed to the HRC, I'll work hard to listen to all voices and make sure that we're serving our entire diverse and varied communities here in Palo Alto. And I thank you for your consideration, and I hope my answers weren't too long, but I feel they were complicated and merited some extra words and thoughts.
Okay, complicated issues, so we appreciate your thought and answers. Sunita, thank you so much for your application. Thanks for spending a couple of minutes with us here, and we wish you all the best of luck, thank you again. Kim, if we could bring in Paula Rug, please.
Perfect. Rug has been promoted to a panelist. So Paula, we see you there. If you could just turn your video and your, I see that you're unmuted.
Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
Welcome. Hi, Paula. Nice to see you after many years.
Yeah.
Anyways, thank you so much for applying to the Human Relations Commission. We really appreciate your interest in being here with us tonight. Wanted to give you a couple of minutes to share a bit about yourself and your interest in this commission, and then we'll go to the council for some questions. Sound good?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening. Like you, I appreciate our quality of life in Palo Alto. Like you, I know that our quality of life is a product created by citizens who participate in its governance. For years, I watched council meetings, attended neighborhood and citywide events, noting the issues and desires of council and fellow citizens. As a school principal for 23 years at large diverse schools, I dealt with similar type issues and was always thinking, wow, I should be helping here in Palo Alto. I'm now retired and ready to roll up my sleeves and participate. I can bring people together to achieve mutual goals, and the mission of the HRC really resonates with me. Today's big issues, police reform, racism, homelessness, need addressing. I support the steps you are taking and want to join you in contributing, continuing the work. So thank you for the opportunity to have this interview. In case you haven't read my application, I've lived in Palo Alto for 30 years. I own a home in Midtown, and my son graduated from Gunn High School. So, you're willing to work if you would like me.
Excellent.
Go ahead, have your questions, please.
Great. Mr. Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yeah, I'll try to ask everybody kind of the same questions. So one, I guess, are you working now? I think maybe you're retired?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And then, you actually wrote about it in your application, but what do you think the city should do about people who are living in vehicles?
Well, I like your safe parking program concept. I think it has a lot of merit. One of the reasons I like the concept of it is that it puts, it helps the congregations who would be supporting the people who are in their parking lots engage in the conversations. So it's not just between the organization that supports the homeless people and the homeless people, but it brings all the community citizens to address the issue. After, I think it was back in February, I can't quite recall when this was first brought up, that I became really aware of it. I walked around my neighborhood. I am surrounded by churches within a five-minute walk in all directions. I have parking lots that could, would be available to homeless people, and I think it's an opportunity for people who have RVs to park there, and I highly support that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac?
Thank you, Mary Fine, Mayor Fine, and good evening, Ms. Rug, it's nice to see you. Please take a moment to think about the people you've worked with in your professional, volunteer, and personal life. And what two words would they use to describe you and your working style?
I think they would say pensive, that I think through things, that I just don't jump into action, that I'm pretty methodical in my work process. I think that process is important. I think another word that would come into my, into mind would be creative. I try to always generate a lot of ideas, think out of the box, and why is this a good idea, why isn't, and look at it from a variety of different lenses. Even in my current retirement, I would say that I'm pensive and creative. And so, a project management style. I also, I would say, people might also say I have a coaching style when working with a group, trying to work with, you know, motivation, and helping people engage and feel good about what they're doing. But that was more because I was the manager of a very large group of people. So, yeah.
That's very helpful, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll jump in with one quickly. Part of the Human Relations Commission's task and their job each year is to go through a city budget and help the city council allocate human resources funding, funding for programs that otherwise wouldn't get funded. And if they're, you know, in your perfect world, what would the city spend more money on in terms of human services and human relations?
In a perfect world, we'd be able to address all the needs that we have. And I'm not 100% certain I can prioritize at the moment which would come on top. I do know that services for seniors, this is, there's an aging population in this community, and certainly senior services are one that I don't think we've addressed enough. On the other hand, I think interracial relations with police reform and racism and understanding other cultures is definitely something the city, as far as a human relations commission, would be, I would want to spend its money on, would be an area. And so that we would be able to, people would just get to know other people better. I would say those are, obviously, children's services, library services, parks. Those are not necessarily human relations issues, but dealing with all levels of people in our community, so that it is a diverse and successful community. I'm not certain so much about teens and but those would be other issues that I would think about and look into. It would require an investigation.
Understood, thank you so much, really appreciate that. Councilmember Niss?
So I am very taken by your background in teaching, especially at the school that was in the East Bay. And these eight great traits. How would you bring something like that background to the Human Relations Commission? Because I can tell you worked with a very diverse group, and it sounds as though getting the California Blue Ribbon distinguished school was quite an accomplishment.
Yes, it was. It was in 2010 that we were acknowledged by the state of California, and we, you put in an application to the state based on your, all sorts of things related to the school, and one of the things was based on the eighth-grade traits that we presented to the state of California in writing, and then they did a visit. So the eighth-grade traits is part of a character education program that focuses on traits and as honesty, integrity, problem-solving, respect, citizenship, and bringing it to a city environment. You, part of it is just acknowledging the fact that different traits, universal traits that we have, make a difference in how we interact with people. And if you present as a council, and you could choose a year, a month, a week, that you would acknowledge and throughout the city in many different ways, that respect was something that was important, and you'd start talking about respect, writing about respect, reading about respect, promoting respect in any marketing way you'd be able to do, through the library, through the parks, through schools. And through this process, discuss what people think about respect and how it feels to be respected, and how it feels not to be respected, for an example. And then you'd move on to the next trait, and constantly going back and using these characteristics, whatever you would define as important for the community, for yourself, for the committee, or the community, the community would define as such, would be that you would refocus on them and put them at the forefront of every meeting that you have. You would be seeing the world through that lens, and you'd also make a commitment. One of the things we did on the campus was every year, we started the year by discussing them throughout the school. I would go around to each classroom, and one year I had 24 classrooms on my campus. It was a big school. And so you talk to the children and then you sign a commitment, and we would put these commitments on the door. So they were in front of your face and you saw them, and so they became, and we, when we, at a faculty meeting, we would use these commitments, and we'd talk about how respect, the characteristic of respect is how you listen to people, how you don't make judgments, how you use, instead of you statements, you make I statements, how you take responsibility for your actions. And so, it sounds kind of fluffy, but in reality, it really works. Because what happens is you learn to have this throughout your lifestyle, and it created an environment on the campus, and I'm pretty certain it would create an environment in the city if it constantly, it doesn't happen over years. Remember, I was at one campus for 18 years. It took a while. Yeah. I don't know if that's answered your question?
Yes, thanks very much.
Thank you. So we're at 10 minutes, but if you just want to kind of give us a quick wrap-up, you know, 15, 30 seconds in conclusion.
Well, I guess I'd like to just say that I believe that the role of a human relations commissioner can be pivotal in dealing with our city's quality of life. And I have the skill, I have the time and the desire to make Palo Alto a city that shines for all. So, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your interest.
Okay.
And Kim, if we could please bring in Nilofer Cholompat, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that.
So I don't see that person on the attendees list, but I do see Kurt Kinsley, which would be after Nilofer.
Okay.
Want me to see if he's?
Let's go to Mr. Kinsky. It's right on time for his interview. And if maybe you could check in and see if Nilofer Cholompat is available as well.
You got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kinsky? It looks like you've unmuted yourself, which is great, and there's your, we just need your video, if you could, please. We just need your video if you could, please. Looks like, can you hear us, Mr. Kinsky? I see you're unmuted.
Does anyone hear anything? I don't. Mr. Kinsky, um, you're unmuted in Zoom, but you may be muted on your phone or computer.
Maybe if you have any earphones or anything like that plugged into your computer, maybe you could pull those out.
Do we have chat enabled here to maybe?
We also. How, let me see if we have chat. I see that Sophia Fohas is also present if we want to give Mr. Kinsky a chance to. Work out his technological kinks.
Let's do that, Sophia, if you'd be willing to step up by 20 minutes or so, we appreciate it. You can step off 10 minutes earlier then. And Kim, if, if we could enable chat and maybe, uh, chat with Mr. Kinsky, that, that might help. All right, um, Sophia, welcome. I'm Adrian. Um, these are my colleagues in the council. Thank you so much for your interest in the Human Relations Commission and thanks for spending a Monday night with us for, for a short time. There's Mr. Kinsky. Um, let's keep on going with Sophia for a minute and Mr. Kinsky will get to you in about 10 minutes, if that's okay. Sorry about the delay, but, but thank you for, for agreeing. Um, so Sophia, uh, again, thank you again for, for applying. We really appreciate it. Uh, it would be great if you could give us a quick rundown about your background and your interest in this commission. And then we'll go around with some questions to, uh, my fellow council members for you.
Okay, so thank you, uh, city council members and Mayor Fine for the opportunity to come before you to talk about. Um, a position on the Human Relations Committee, Commission. I've become increasingly interested, uh, in serving my community. And see a place on the commission, uh, as a vehicle for that engagement. I've lived in Palo Alto for eight years in the Ventura neighborhood. Uh, I'm a mixed-race child of immigrants who was actually born in Honolulu, and so I come. From a place that really defines cultural diversity. Uh, I'm a veteran teacher educator in K-12 public education. Um, and have worked across agencies in my work, particularly in the arts. I'm a professional violinist and violist and played in the Stockton, in fact, continue to play in the Stockton Symphony as a non-regular player. But I'm also a mariachi performer and founded a program in San Francisco. Um, I'm a servant leader, a creative thinker, a team player, and have been a mentor for leadership of others in my work. And I've done really some deep work, particularly in the last five years, but over the last 25 years. Addressing social justice and racial equity issues through the lens of arts and culture at. Uh, three levels, the regional, the state, and the national levels. Um, I believe all of these components, um, of my experience would complement, uh, the current membership on the Human Relations Commission. And I look forward to bringing my skill set and experiences to this body.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Um, and could we just, uh, turn off the videos of those who aren't interviewing for the moment? Um, and we'll bring them back on in a moment. Um, okay, let's go to my fellow council members. If you have questions for Sophia, please, uh, hit your hand and I'll go to you. Council member Niss.
So starting out, um, and I see that you've got an extensive background, certainly in education and a background in. Um, looking at diversity and so forth. What has the Human Relations Commission done recently? That you've either admired or you haven't admired? And how would, what would you have done differently?
Well, I had the opportunity to connect most recently around, uh, Eight Can't Wait and pub and. Around police reform and I've really appreciated, um. I happened to see, um, and attend the webinar in which the police chief and the deputy police chief. Sat in with, um, the chair of the Human Rights Commission, Reverend Smith. And discussing issues around, um, police conduct in Palo Alto. And having been, um, I grew up in San Jose, um, after moving there from Hawaii and. You know, Palo Alto is really the center of higher education. Um, and in my experience in, um. As an, as a teacher, I always considered it really to be sort of a hub for art, arts and culture. And so I live in that diverse community where African Americans and repatriated, um. Japanese internees were allowed to live. And so a gr- a great many of my mem- uh, my community members, my neighbors are African American. And I do see, um, differences in the way people are treated according to their race or ethnicity. And so it was really, I felt, um, that the city council, Human Relations Commission. And the police department were really making good faith, faith efforts in addressing. Really what's become a, a explosive issue on the national stage.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, so you're currently with the county.
So I'm the arts, I'm the new arts coordinator for, um, the Santa Clara County Office of Education. So I come by way of, um, I just started my job, um, and then COVID-19 and then we, schools. Closed and so I've done my job entirely on Zoom.
Okay, no, let me ask you a different question. What do you think the city should do about people who are living in vehicles?
So I take particular interest in the issues of the unhoused. Um, because I've worked at two county offices of education. We've had the opportunity to have direct oversight over homeless and foster youth. And I think housing instability is, is a serious issue in California. Um, I mean, never mind that my own sister can't move back even with a full-time job, um, at a higher. You know, a higher education institution. Um, it has become increasingly, um, unaffordable to, for the average person to live in, um. In the Bay Area in particular, but in California in general. And so. In looking at homelessness in both in San Francisco and then I live in a neighborhood that has a, a many, many parked vehicles. It seems to me that dealing with homelessness and the unhoused. Instead of looking at it as a temporary situation, which I remember when this, um, issue came to the forefront in the eighties. It was seen as something temporary that will just provide a quick fix and it'll go away. Well, it hasn't gone away. It's been 30 or 40 years and we're still dealing with homelessness. And I think the pro-. Protocols and processes around social service support for homelessness hasn't changed to. Meet the needs of a persistent homeless situation. And so, um, I heard another, um. I heard another applicant talking about finding a place, just addressing, yes, homelessness exists, it's here. How do we decriminalize it? How do we decriminalize poverty? Because it's having undue, um, effects on the rest of our society when we cannot, um. Do targeted supports for the people that need it the most. So it is about changing the mindset and making it, developing processes and protocols around, not a temporary. Situation that will be fixed in three months, but is a persistent social and economic situation in our society.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine, and, uh, good evening, Ms. Fo- Fohas. Is that how you pronounce it? Nice to have you. Um, could you take a moment to think about the people you've worked with in your professional volunteer and personal life? And normally they don't all listen to the questions. It sounds like you might know where I'm headed. So what two words would they use to describe you and your working style?
Interesting you should ask that because when I first joined the county office, all of us had to take a test to sort of see what our strengths were. Um, but the ones that, the two that I'll speak about, um, today is. Um, I'm a connector and so, and this has played out in a very big sense. While we've been online for the last five months. And so to be able to connect to people I haven't met and also rekindle, um, previous relationships of people I did work with. Um, is a big deal in my, um, in my line of profession and it does, it's also. Leadership is not given to you, it's, it's building a sense of trust and relationships with those that you serve. And so, um, I do a lot of trust building. And so being the connector and can, and also connecting resources and people. Who would o- otherwise not think about working with each other. It's about breaking down those silos, which we have a lot of silos in education. And so I would bring that skill to this work. The other thing is, is I'm a strategic thinker and so I tend to see the big picture. And also see impact into the future. Because we, whereas we need to be grounded in what is happening now, we also have to have the ability to see. Into the future, what would we like to see? What's the best case scenario? What are our current conditions now and how do we get there? And so I would bring that skill set as well to my work on the commission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, council member Tanaka.
Thank you for joining us and thank you for applying. Uh, my question to you is. In your order about, quite a bit about, um, in your application about the police. What do you, what do you think is the best way to kind of judge the performance of our police department? Let's say relative to others. Right now, council member Niss, myself, we're on the ad hoc committee trying to figure out, you know, alternative models. Alternative public safety models. And, you know, the big challenge is, well, how do you know what's better, right? There's, there's certainly a lot of different varieties, right? But how do you figure out what's necessarily a better model? What are some of the metrics you could think of that would be good for us to use or look at that might help us figure, figure this question out?
So, the thing that's been happening with the police over time, never mind that. The root and the history of the police is one that's sort of rooted in violence and, and, um. You know, division, but, but education has had a lot of, um, stresses put on it. You know, often we say teachers are not just teaching, they also have to feed students and schools have to take care of. Physical needs and social emotional needs. And so it's not a question of. Defunding the police. But pivoting so that they are about the enforcement of crimes of. Crimes against. Not so much so- social service crimes. I think what's happened is, is the police have become involved with social service issues. Which hospitals and social workers and therapists might be better ha- uh, um, trained to, to manage. And, and it's become, and less of some of the things around crime and, um. Addressing criminal behavior. And so. Also criminal behavior has become racialized so that the outcomes have been almost, um, predictable. Along racial lines. And so. In terms of the way the police manage, um, their. Um, their work is also really important. The culture of the police is very important too. What inside the culture of the police make it counterproductive? We know what we want. But we're still getting the wrong outcomes. And so what are the outcomes we want and what? How would those outcomes sort of help build a different way of being? It's not just a different way of acting or different rules. But it is about the mindset at which we, uh, approach social, social issues and how are the police used? In, in the way of dealing with social issues that maybe their training runs counter to. They're not a therapeutic agency and yet they're often called out for, for things that require third of therapeutic, um. Uh, solutions. And so how do we, how do we look at all of our social service agencies? The fi- fire department, hospital, police, and begin to think about, okay. Where can we streamline and where can we do focus the work so that the police are. Not put into situations where things go wrong, they're carrying a gun, things get heated. You know, I, I think the whole system, um, bears some review.
So, so we're at time at 10 minutes. I want to thank you for your application and your interest in the commission and for spending some time with us. Do you just have one last thought you'd like to leave us with?
No, just that, you know, I, just in these increasingly s- sort of fraught times, I've felt. Just an increasing responsibility to address the issues that I address in schools, which are really a microcosm for a larger society. To a, a body that is dealing with a broader, uh, set of issues. And so I'd be, um, honored to serve on the commission in that case.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your interest in your application. Um, Kim, if we could maybe go to Neelofar Cholampat, and again, I apologize if I'm, uh. Mispronouncing that. And Mr. Kinsky, thank you for your patience. We'll get to you right after this.
You've got it. One second, I will promote. Okay, Neelofar Cholampat.
Hi, I'm so sorry. This is, I'm so sorry.
Oh, okay, totally good. Um, so is it Neelofar?
It's Neelofar, yes.
Neelofar, thank you. I'm Adrian. Nice to meet you. Colleagues. Um, thank you so much for your interest in, uh, the Human Relations Commission and for applying. We really appreciate that. Uh, want to give you a couple of minutes, uh, just to tell about yourself and why you're interested in this commission. And then I'll go to my colleagues for questions they may have. So please take it away.
Yeah, um, hello, I, my name is Neelofar. Um, I have grown up here. I went to, you know, Hoover when it first started, uh, off of, um, Charleston. Um, and then I went to Termon and then I went to Gunn, um, graduated, I went to Davis. Um, so I've been here for a while. I did leave for a couple of years, then I decided to come back because I missed it, um, sometimes. Um, but yeah, I, uh, I kind of applied to this position on a whim. Um, I have a few friends who work on, um, commissions in San Jose and Cupertino and. Um, just like the kind of conversations that we have about, you know, what people's thought processes and like. What, um, goes on in such, like, what we seemingly believe to be, you know. Not necessarily impactful places, but make really impactful changes, you know, just even if it is just citywide. Um, so yeah, I have been, I like saw the position open. I, I was just, you know, I, I applied on a whim. I got an interview and I came late to the interview. Um, but it's been, it's been, um, it's been really interesting watching, you know, I've gone through a few of the minutes. Um, it's really commendable how cities have been able to kind of work through this pandemic. Um, I think like, you know, just in general communication towards like for testing and things like that. Um, I have a background, I got my master's in public health. Um, so, you know, health literacy and. Um, communication is like really important to me and I, I want to say like, it's been really cool. Watching the city of Palo Alto be, be able to like communicate through Instagram and through Twitter and all the places to. Um, uh, you know, get the word out about testing and or the library or the fire situation. Um, so yeah, um. That's me. I've worked on commissions before. Um, I did a few commissions in Davis when I was an undergrad. Um, so yeah, government is a very fascinating place to be.
Thank you so much. Council member Phil Seth.
Uh, evening. Thanks for, thanks for applying and, and doing this with us tonight. I'm really, I'm really interested in your thoughts on, you talked about healthcare, uh, healthcare literacy. So how do you see that applying to Palo Alto? Um, obviously COVID, you know, is one aspect of it, but more, that's going to go away at some point or other. Bro- more broadly, how do you think, uh, how, how do you think that would, would fit here?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, I would, I would say like in general, I think. You know, when I was doing my masters, I finished my masters two years ago, but we, we, the. The big topic then was, you know, rural health and telecommunication and telehealth. And I think, um, this pandemic really showed that how important telehealth is and I think. Um, like, you know, we, I, I even go to Palo Alto Medical Foundation and I have to do through, uh, go through a telehealth appointment. So I think. Um, and I think also this pandemic has really enlightened people to the fact that public health, like what that means. Um, you know, it's not just for the people with insurance. It's not just for the people that are wealthy enough to be able to go to a hospital. Um, so I think. Um, so I think. Broadly, I think the importance is just making sure people are aware. Um, that your city can provide healthcare, um, even if it does take longer, if there's lines and you have to go through things. Um, there are barriers to access, but it doesn't mean that your city doesn't provide a X, like a certain amount of care. Um, so yeah, I think broadly i- it's important. That we, you know, obviously fund healthcare and um work on. Getting the word out for our most vulnerable populations.
Thank you very much, uh, Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, two quick questions for you, um, can you tell us about your current job? Second, what do you think the city should do about people living in vehicles?
Ooh, excellent question, um, yes, my current job, I work at a health tech startup in San, well, it was based in San Mateo, now we're just kind of everywhere. Um, and uh, it, they do, we kind of do clinical trials, but with wearables and so. Um, a lot of pharmaceutical companies will outsource and ask us to run studies and trials. Um, based on a certain, you know, disease effort or whatever. Um, and yeah, that's what I work now. Um, and your second question is about people who live in vehicles, um. So I, I obviously do not have a solution, I, we did spend a lot of time. On this in school and I've like, you know, read a couple of studies where this is like. Uh, I think this is very, uh, this concept is just something that's like very. Foreign, but it's like possible, I did see that in Hawaii, there were. An abundance of homes that were kind of not being used because they were like either. Um, used for affordable care or for, I mean, affordable housing or um. Like people only have them for like summer homes or something like that and so. Um, doctors in Hawaii were giving out as like a prescription for a shelter and so. Like having, obviously that requires, there are a lot of factors until that, you know, we would need. Like actual sheltered locations um and available locations, but. Giving, giving a person who does not currently have a home, a livable running, like shelter with running water that is. That is for themselves is like more impactful because, you know, their, their like mental health is. You know, subsided, they're um, they're given some sort of stability and even just like that small piece. Of having something that's theirs is really, really, it's just, it showed in the study that it like made a really big impact. Um, again, this isn't a solution in any capacity, but I think like, you know, looking, I like follow those kind of studies and it's really interesting to see like what works and what doesn't. Um, so yeah, I just. It's something, I like constantly want to learn more about what, what to do about people who don't have a home currently. But I don't really know what the solution is all the time.
Great, thank you. Thank you, council member Cormac.
Good evening, Ms. Cholompot, thanks for joining us. Um, my question is, take a minute to think about the people you've worked with in your professional volunteer, educational and personal life. And what two words would they use to describe you and your working style?
Okay. Um, I can go because we just did this at work. Um, um, I think one would be, I really value collaboration, you know, um. Like working in public health sectors, it's important to. Gain a team and experience from, with experience from all sorts of different locations, so I guess collaboration would be really a big deal. Um, and then I think. In general, like, I don't know if this is like a word, but I think it's really important to be able to listen to people and just like step back when you don't need to necessarily speak any, on anything. Um, if, if I don't have the expertise, it's not my job to be able to like, you know, talk over people, so I think in general. Um, just like listening.
Wonderful, thank you.
Right, thank you, so we have just a minute, uh, two minutes left, so I've got one really quick question and then want to ask you to wrap up with your final thoughts. Um. This is kind of odd, but like in terms of listening, who do you think gets listened to the most in Palo Alto and who gets listened to the least?
Ooh, excellent question. Um. To me, as an outsider, it feels like people who have. A certain amount of power and or people who pay the most in property taxes. Um, who are just the wealthiest, um, so I think those are the people that get listened to the most. I think in my interactions of people who live in Palo Alto, I would say, going back to the question about people living in vehicles. The people living in vehicles or people living on the street, I think, um, yeah.
Nice, thank you, um, we've got about a minute left, if you have any last thoughts for us, um, ideas and just, um. Anything else?
Yeah, well, I, I guess my question would just kind of be like, what are you looking for in a commissioner?
All right, question back, awesome, I appreciate that, um, I'll take that. Uh, my colleagues can certainly chime in, so I think, you know, on the one hand, you've hit a couple of things that are important, which is listening to the community. Um, I've always thought of the Human Relations Commission as a little bit of our uh. Consciousness or conscience of, of the council and the community out there, the canary in the coal mine, trying to figure out what issues are bubbling up and need to be addressed. Um, but we also need folks who really understand that the very specific and important role that the HRC plays. In terms of helping the city council and the city staff decide uh where we should spend certain funds on programs. Um, such as, you know, helping the blind or helping seniors or helping youth and trying to figure out where, where that balances and uh. On a year-to-year basis, that, that might change, I, I don't know if any of my colleagues have a different take, but. Those are the two things I've always appreciated. If you want to jump in, folks, go for it.
Yeah, I, I, I'd second the last, the, the second thing you just said, that the thing you got to understand is and be, be prepared for is that. You know, there's way more good things to spend money on than there is money to go around, you know, and that's, that, that's, that, that's tough, I mean, that's, that, that's a challenge for folks. You, you got to have a certain fortitude to be able to do that. So, so, so.
Absolutely.
So congratulations.
That's well said, uh, council member Phil Seth, there are certainly more um issues, we'd love to put more resources towards than we have. Um, so want to thank you again for your application, really appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience, I'm so sorry.
No worries at all, but thanks again, we really appreciate it, have a good one.
You too.
All right, I think we're on to Kurt Kinsky, Mr. Kinsky, my apologies that we delayed you a little bit, really appreciate your patience.
Certainly, uh, no issues from my end. Um, but I think you have to actually start my video.
Okay, Kim, if we can help.
Somebody can. And I'm hoping it'll work if I should be so fortunate as to get on the commission, I obviously have to upgrade my, my video.
The, the ins and outs of Zoom.
Indeed.
Let's, let's give you a minute to see if we can get that started.
She's asked me to start my video, I'm starting, come on, come to life, please.
It's looking like you're trying, the video is trying to come in. Okay, there we go.
Uh, it'll be scratchy, but let's see if it'll, there we go.
Good enough.
Um, great.
Nice to meet you, I'm Adrian and uh, thank you so much for applying to the uh, Human Relations Commission here, these are my colleagues all around me. Um, just want to give you, we, we've got 10 minutes, so it'd be great if you could tell us a bit about your background and your interest in this commission. And then I'm going to go to my colleagues if they have any questions for you, sound good?
Thank you, yes, uh, in terms of my, my background and my interest in the commission, I don't really, in terms of the interests, have much to offer that's different. Than the four or five other applicants whom I've very much enjoyed. Listening to their presentations, a very diverse and interesting group, I think we're all motivated by a very similar. Instance, which is today's kind of fraught circumstances. And that it's no longer a time to be sitting on the sidelines, it's actually, as I wrote in my application, now is now, it's time to. Take some action and become integrally and intimately involved in. My community, I've lived in Palo Alto for 10 years, I've observed, I've, I've watched, I've voted, I've, I've participated with a very small. Case P, but today's world and the issues that we're confronting, whether they're budget, social, human. They deserve more of my intention than sitting on the sidelines. In terms of my background, I'm a international tax partner with Ernst &amp; Young, a big four accounting firm. I had the great fortune in my career to live and work in. Seven different countries, um. I, I operated from our Amsterdam, Milan, London, Paris, Shanghai, Hong Kong, Chicago. San Jose and now San Francisco offices, I've had the great fortune to be a member of diverse teams and lead diverse teams. In that, in the aspect of my, my career and I'd like to actually bring some of the things that I've learned in my. Professional career to, to bear on. The commission and my participation as a more active member of the Palo Alto community.
Thank you so much, really appreciate that, council member Niss.
What a perfect entree. As you said, you'd like to bring some of that. Um, experience from professionalism with you, you have an extensive background in other countries. How would you bring that to the Human Relations Commission and what have you seen in other countries? That you think we might learn from and benefit from knowing about?
Actually, what I've seen in other countries is a more non-hierarchical approach to things. And if, uh, if. Uh, council member McCormick had asked me the question, that would have been one of the adjectives that I would have described to myself.
It's, it's coming.
Okay, okay, well then this may be a little bit redundant and that is that, I mean, we have to be, and, and sometimes these words. Lose meaning because they're used quite often, we have to be inclusive, we have to listen to everyone's ideas, we have to wait them. We have to understand where they come from and the, the rationality and the, the objectivity and the practicality behind everyone's ideas. But we have to listen and we have to avoid a hierarchy where, at least in my professional. Background, I, I'm at the top of that hierarchy and yet. Throughout my entire career, I've never thought that I was somehow blessed with the wisdom of Solomon, that some junior couldn't know more than I know, because they certainly can. In today's world, many people that are coming directly out of school right now know a great deal more in terms of. Technology and use of technology and actually apply application of law and, and regulations than perhaps a crusty curmudgeon such as myself does. But the point is to be non-hierarchical, the point is to listen, to observe, to, to try and capture as many. Inputs as possible, wait them. Organize them. Decide their applicability from both a, um, a practicality point of view and, and in the context of the commission. A human relations point of view and then take action on them. So non-hierarchical would be the one thing I think we can learn from other cultures and, and, and take that to heart.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member Cormac, you're up.
Sounds like you've already heard my question, but um, what would people who you've worked with in your professional volunteer, educational, personal life? Say about you and your working style, two words?
So the second word, if I can take, take, uh, if I can already say that the non-hierarchical or the inclusive has been covered, would be decisive. I, I, I take actions, now many times. Uh, those actions are, are appropriate and, and correct and proper, sometimes they're not. Sometimes I make mistakes and then we have to be able to quickly adapt. And learn from those mistakes and change and pivot in a different direction. I think it's important, however, to be decisive, to take action. I don't want to be Hamlet, I've never wanted to be Hamlet and sit and ponder and, and ultimately not take any action. So I'd rather take an action that perhaps ultimately is proven. Wrong or incorrect and hopefully in the context of the Human Relations Commission, uh, how it's proven wrong and how it's proven. Inappropriate would be in a positive way, not a, an in, in, inappropriate way, but learn from that mistake and then pivot. In learning from it to, to doing something else, something different, something. Closer to right and something closer to appropriate.
And is that what people would say about you or is that what?
Yes.
Say about yourself, okay.
No, that's what I, I think that my colleagues would say decisive, almost to a fault is. Is a very appropriate word, uh, adjective for myself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, council member Phil Seth.
Yeah, you said in your application that uh, you commented that there's been some internal conflict on uh, the HRC and some uh. Disagreement about diversity in society and so forth, you know, how would you, how would you, how would you approach that on the HRC?
How would I approach the, the?
You said there's some conflict on the HRC and there's a lack of confidence in the workings of the commission, so how would you, how would you approach that?
I think actually in the context of what happened in January and some of the, the um, public reporting about. What took place in the decision around who would be the chair of the commission, et cetera, showed that there was some conflict. Uh, how would I go about? Kind of mitigating that conflict, I would try and. Take everyone's views into account and make a decisive, decisive action accordingly. How would I re-engender the trust of the, the public in the commission? Again, I think it has something to do with taking actions that the public can actually see as. That decision has been made, now let's move forward, implement that decision, see if it works and if not pivot. But I think when, when I wrote that the, the public attitude towards the workings of the commission is, is perhaps neutral to negative at the, at this point. It has something to do with, is the commission actually taking enough action, is it really driving and making change in our community? Or is it at least pursuant to what took place earlier this year, more focused on its internal dynamics and, and the interactions between commission members?
Thank you, council member Tanaka.
So I, I think Kurt, you have a very interesting background, I like how you lived in different parts of the world. Um, I asked you a question that I asked someone before, so you might have heard it, which is. How do you figure out whether the police department, like our police department is performing well versus others, like how do you? You know, it seems like you have a very analytical background, just given, given that you're in a tax profession. How would you figure out, like, maybe we have the world's best police department or maybe it needs a lot of perform, how would you figure that out, what metrics would you use, what would the process be?
Well, I think it's quite clear that the KPIs for an effective police department have changed. It's no longer arrest records or convictions or things along those lines, sure, those are important. Those are important in the context of what we would classically identify as crime and criminality. But I think what's happened of late and what's clearly risen to the top is the social interaction, it's the community policing. It's the community engagement, one of the, the previous uh. Uh. Candidates talked to, very, very well, well-spoken, talked to the, the social change and the, the necessity for. Having a police department that, that is engaged more in its community and I think we need to set up. A different set of measures and a different set of performance indicators to show community engagement. I'm not saying I have those at hand, I'm not a criminologist, but I am someone who would be interested in working with. Someone who has greater expertise in that area to kind of define what those metrics for social engagement would be. Because clearly, across the board, across the United States, attitudes are hardening. Against or for the, 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 the blue and we, it's not, it's not us versus them, it's not them versus us, it can't be that way. So we should try and find a way to, to benchmark community engagement and bring back a sense of. What the police mean to us and what we mean to the police in our community. I wish I had the right KPIs, I do, uh, I, and I think many people across the country are struggling with those.
I think we all are, so some empathy there, um, so we just have a little bit under a minute left, if you have kind of a last thought or pitch you want to leave us with.
Regardless of who you select tonight, I think the person just needs to be the, the right voice for Palo Alto. And I think we are a community that, that both from the inside out and from the outside in is a, is a focal point of many different peoples. He, people within the community, they're, they're searching for a better, a new, a different Palo Alto. And people outside our community look to us as though we're a beacon and we need to. We need to find that beacon again, we need to find that, that, that light that other people can look to Palo Alto. And see something that they admire and that they aspire towards, I'm not saying that that's diminished at all. I'm just saying that in today's world, we, we need to continue to keep that, that light kind of bright. And I would like to, to serve on the commission to, to make that happen or help continue it happening.
Thank you, uh, we really appreciate your interest in spending some time with us tonight here, so, so thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, good luck with your deliberations.
Thanks so much, um, Kim, I believe we have one last applicant on the HRC, Listina Trainer.
Yes, she is here, I'm going to promote her to panelist right now. So let's give her a second to hear audio and unmute.
Yeah.
Listina, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but I don't know why I'm not showing up here, let's see. Um, can you, oh, video, here we go. Okay, great, oh, that light. That light, not helping matters, I might turn off that light because it's kind of. Oh, now it's totally dark, oh no, that's good. Um, so my name is Listina Trainer and I moved to Palo Alto a year ago in August. Right in time for a plague, um, I, I moved here so that my son could enroll in seventh grade, um. So I think it was like the 13th of August that we arrived and he started at JLS. And then spring break time came around and school stopped. And then spring break time came around and school stopped. So, um, anyway, I, I'm a native New Yorker. I was born in Manhattan and then I was raised my entire childhood in Scarsdale, New York, which is a community. As far as school systems go, pretty similar to Palo Alto. We've always ranked within the top 10 in the nation in terms of academics. Out of my class of 400 kids in high school, two went to not a four-year college and the rest of us went to Ivy League schools. I didn't get into Ivy League school. I went to Boston College, but it's like really up there academically. And I'm so grateful that that's all I knew. So it wasn't like a big struggle for me, like what to do. I just went off to college and I went off to law school, like lots of my classmates. The one thing that really differentiated me from the rest of my classmates, a lot of whom I'm still in touch with today, is that I was black and most of my classmates were white. And at one point, thinking back, New York Magazine did sort of a racist cover story called "The Japaning of Scarsdale", because lots of Japanese people were moving over to work at IBM because we were the center of tech in, you know, that area when we had IBM. So anyway, I grew up visiting Palo Alto every summer of my life because my grandparents lived here. My grandparents lived on Addison Avenue for years and then eventually moved to East Meadow, right across from Mitchell Park, where my grandmother died in that house and my grandfather moved to Litten Gardens, but was only there for a short time before he passed away. They were both late in their 90s and loved living in Palo Alto. And so of course I loved visiting Palo Alto my whole life and my mother lives here now. And so anyway, I have two kids that are out of the house already in college, but I do have my eighth grader now who's zooming school every day and it's going great. I will say that I'm, I've always been super, super, super active in my community, in my school, in all my schools. I, I lived in Connecticut for the last 20 years before I moved out here. And I sat on various boards, but I also just like volunteered in the trenches and a lot of organizations. I, I think I put them in my application, so I don't have to list them here. But there's a very, one really strong reason that I'm always so active and it's because of who my parents are and how I was raised to be. So it's like, I never cannot be involved in my community. My mom was born in Berkeley, went to UC Berkeley, ended up getting graduate degree and was headed for the Peace Corps. But her professor said, well, there's a lot of black colleges in the South that are being, losing their accreditation because they don't have professors with advanced degrees. Would you consider going to the Peace Corps in Birmingham, Alabama instead? Not really the Peace Corps, but just go teach there. And she was like, okay. And my mom's white. And she had really, like, she never grew up with a television, so she didn't really know too much about what was all going on in the civil rights movement, even though, you know, she saw it in a newspaper, but you can kind of detach, as we see today, a lot of people detach from what's really going on. And she went down there. My dad was an older student because he had been taking time off. He wasn't my dad yet. He was just a college student at a black college in Birmingham, Alabama, Miles College. But he was very active, marching, demonstrating with Martin Luther King, and he was really involved with voter registration. So, long story short, my parents ended up scandalously finding each other and they quickly had to leave the South because the Ku Klux Klan, my dad was on their radar big time and it was very dangerous. And they had to, my mom had to drive their VW Bug north of the Mason Dixon line. And my, my dad had to take Greyhound bus before they could, could together, end up in New York together. But as soon, you know, basically I was born a couple of years later and I was just born into a house where like, I just watched my parents, no matter what they were doing career-wise, sometimes their career overlapped with sort of social justice issues. But they always just made time to be involved and they taught me like it's my obligation to, to always be doing that and always trying to make, you know, engage with other people that aren't necessarily the same background as me.
I, I, I hate to cut you off, but you, you kind of stole my thunder at the beginning.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all good. It's all good. I, I wanted to save some time for my council colleagues to make sure. And then we'll leave you a minute or two to wrap up at the end, and I apologize for my darn dog.
It's so funny because my dog just heard that and he, I'm looking at him like, don't start.
Councilmember Ness.
Well, I, I think you have kind of summed up your motivation, your background and so forth. But there are a couple of things that I can see are absolutely very straightforward. And particularly since you're applying to the HRC, I'm looking at Connecticut Against Gun Violence, founding member of March for Change and so forth. Talk a little about that and what that would add to the HRC.
Well, I stumbled upon that because where I was living in Connecticut was Reading, Connecticut at that time, right next to Newtown. So I literally just driven my kids to school and dropped them off when I started hearing some report on the radio. And it's like, I was sitting in my car for the next two hours, just like could not believe what I was hearing was happening. And, um, okay. And so I, I ended up just becoming like an activist. You know, I, I was like, what can I do? So I, I met with some people at the Westport, Deacon, can you please, sorry. I met with some people at the Westport Library. It was so grassroots, organic. We just sort of said, like, what can we do? We have to like march on the Capitol and we just started organizing. And, and then working with an existing organization, Connecticut Against Gun Violence, that had obviously been focusing on this issue of gun violence for years, but, you know, until it like crosses your radar in that kind of way. So anyway, myself and two other women really just strategized and got a bunch of maybe 5,000 people to march in Hartford. And we had speakers, victims of gun violence and, but it, it went on from there. Like we, I, we ended up, the two other women and myself all ended up on the board of Connecticut Against Gun Violence. And then we just, you know, went on from there, having panels and raising money and having all kinds of awareness, sort of. And, and obviously trying to promote legislation. We testified multiple times and in front of our state government and tried to get legislation passed, sensible gun laws. And Joe Biden came and spoke in Danbury at, at the college there. Anyway, that's, that was my journey. And from there I got involved with the League of Women Voters in my, in my town in Reading because they really needed some spice and they needed a focus for their study groups and panels. And so I joined them as well to help educate about gun violence.
Thank you. Thanks for your answer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Ms. Trainer, I share your pain with the Eichler lighting on Zoom. Yeah. It's not awesome, so.
It's not. About Eichler. And I'm, and I love Eichler because he didn't redline, you know, he wasn't for that.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. So please take just a moment to think about the people you've worked with in your professional volunteer educational and personal life. What two words would they use to describe you and your working style?
I would say candid, for sure. I'm probably not the best at strategizing about how I'm going to couch something or whatever. I really do feel like I speak from my true thoughts and the other word might be level-headed, because I really do, I really do value, you know, I love to give my thoughts on something, but I also really like to hear other people's thoughts. And I, I, I can be convinced and influenced, like I do want to hear other perspectives. So I kind of, my middle name is Constance and I do feel inside me, I've sort of a Constance where I'm like weighing things and, and trying to come up with like a solution that, that makes sense.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. We have about a minute and a half left. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Hi, you may have heard me ask other people this question, but can, can you tell us about your job today? And secondly, what do you think the city should do about people living in vehicles?
Okay, so I know I spoke too long in the beginning. So my job today is in, like, I'm in between jobs in a way. I am not a member of the California Bar and before COVID, my plan was, okay, I'm going to move out to California, be near my mom, get my son settled into school. Once he's in school, I'll start studying for the California Bar. But that all sort of changed. So I'm fortunate that I, you know, it wasn't a desperate situation where I had to get right back to work. And I also have been really busy helping my mom sort out the estate of her sister. So I'm working with a local attorney here in Palo Alto and that's been actually really fun for me. But the other part of your question was?
Oh, what, what do you think the city should do about people living in vehicles?
Okay, so that is like fascinating to me. That is something that I don't remember from when I used to visit all the time and see my grandparents. I don't think that was happening then. But yeah, it, it blows my mind, actually, the more I've heard about that from local people and understanding that so many of these people are actually employed. And it's not like, I, I, I wouldn't say they're homeless in the sense of like living on the street. It just seems pretty baffling to me. But one thing in terms of housing, I've noticed that San Jose is doing something with tiny houses that looks really interesting to me. Building these tiny houses so that, you know, I, I guess those are for, more for people that are actually living on the street. But one thing is like, I, I walk down at Shoreline all the time and I see all the construction going on by Google. And I think to myself, like, Google's making so much money and they're doing so much construction. Like, can't they build some tiny houses or can there be like a local competition, like who can build some, you know? It might, that's just so like off the top of my head, but it has crossed my, my mind when I'm walking and just thinking about sort of the disparity. Like you have all these camper vans parked in front of these amazing construction projects going on. There has to, there could be maybe some kind of project that would benefit everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're at 10 minutes. I'm sure you for your application, your interest in the HRC. We really appreciate.
Thanks so much.
Speaking up. So thank you so much. Hope you have a nice evening.
Thanks.
Kim, I think that completes all of our HRC applicants. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have four applicants for the Public Art Commission. And I see Marilyn Gottlieb Roberts is present, so I'm going to promote her to a panelist.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Hey, Kim, there is a gentleman named Morales who is originally on the list. Is he not? Did he withdraw?
I believe so. Let me pull up the staff report. One second.
It was crossed off.
An email.
It was crossed off? Okay.
We got an email.
Thanks.
The email with the agenda said that he'd withdrawn.
Okay. True that. I liked his application.
Marilyn, welcome. I'm Adrian. Thank you so much for applying to the Public Art Commission. We really appreciate your interest and spending some time with us tonight. We'd like to hear a couple of minutes just about your background and why you've applied for the commission. And then I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for some questions. Sound good?
Okay, good. Well, thank you for inviting me. And I'd like to mention two activities of the PAC that are especially interesting to me. One of them is the Foraging Islands Watershed Sculpture and Baylands and the PAC's integration of private or commercial interest with those of public culture. I think that's really interesting and important and they seem to be pushing ahead with it. If I was selected for the commission and if it matches their priorities, there are a couple of things that I'd like, I think I'd really enjoy taking on outside the meetings. I'm an experienced professor of art and would like to work with organizations like the Cupperly Art Studio Program. I think, I don't know, I didn't mention, I'm, I'm a working artist, so I'd bring, I, I, I'm not sure that they have other artists on the panel now. But I'd be interested in putting that and my experience as a professor of art to work. And I also like to work with, with the library. I've noticed they've only got two public art books there and they're both really good, but it's only two. And neither one of them are, are available now. So I'd like to see that their list expanded and I'd like to see, see those books promoted, maybe even with some workshops and things. But that's a wish. Diverse, culturally diverse crossroads communities are where creative flowering happens. And before my recent move to Palo Alto, I was broadly involved in Miami's blending of Latin, African and East Coast transplants. Cultural diversity is also central in my own work. The subject of my 40-year effort that I'm just finishing up now is an oral almanac, a mix of Welsh, Cherokee and African star laws that was used for generations by my family on our Georgia farm. So that's it. I tried to keep it under a minute.
Thank you. We really appreciate that and thanks for that. Councilmember Ness.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Our applicant, great background in art. You've been in art for a long time. Would you be willing to share with us what your favorite piece of art is in Palo Alto? And perhaps point out one that you're not quite as fond of?
Well, I started off with that. I really liked that, 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 the Foraging Islands. I think that's, you know, a wonder, a wonderful project. I mean, do you want me to go into the reasons that I like it or is it just telling you what I like?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, for one thing, I like the idea that it, that it was built as a collaboration, so that it involved the community in the process. And, and with, you know, as you all know, with art, it's always a problem of getting the community involved and interested. You know, if you, if you want, if, oh, gosh, okay, here I go. The, the, our whole idea of public art, at least in this culture, really starts with the Greeks. And one of the things that the classical Greeks wanted for all of their citizens, you know, that didn't include women and that didn't include the slaves, but their citizens, they wanted them to be able to think beautiful thoughts. And they felt that unless they were surrounded by beauty, it would be very hard to think beautiful thoughts. So beauty isn't just marble statuary. Beauty is seeing a wilderness area come back to life and to see homeless for the animals happening instead of being destroyed. You know, yay. So I love that. One I'm not crazy about, oh, oh, I'm not real crazy about the Bruce, Bruce Beasley piece. It's maybe because, you know, the, it's a good idea, but the sighting of it, the, oh, it, it was a piece, it's a piece that the way it's installed would be absolutely critical to a, a good reading of it. And I, I'm just not really crazy about the way it was installed. So does that answer your question?
Thank you for sharing all that.
Okay.
Thanks, Councilmember Ness. I'm going to quiz all my colleagues someday about their favorite and least favorite public art. Councilmember Cormac.
Good evening, Ms. Gottlieb Roberts. Professor, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for your thoughts on that. I will say, I remember being at the Public Art Commission when the Beasley sculpture was proposed. And you and I can have a conversation about that another time if you'd like. And
I'd love that.
Someone said, I'm not, we're not thinking of it as a, as a library piece of art. And I was like, oh dear. So anyway, but it has many, he's a wonderful artist and he has many proponents. But I, I thank you for commenting about the sighting, S-I-T-I-N-G sighting. Yeah. Two quick questions. One is, what kind of art do you do? What are, what are the mediums that you work in?
Well, I'm a classically trained painter. I, I started off going to a French academy when I was 14 years old. And, you know, so I'm classically trained, but the kind of work that I've been doing since about 1980 is really what, the 40-year piece that I've been working on was but the 40-year piece that I've been working on was my, my family's almanac. I said, an oral almanac. It's how, how they ran the farm, basically. And I just got really interested in the history of oral almanacs. That's why I spent, gosh, the 90s, the first 10 years I would, I was teaching in the winter and spring. And then in the summer, I would group all my classes together and I spent all summer in Mali and in Senegal with pastoral nomads, you know, letting them teach me about how they see the stars. And then I got a Fulbright and was in Nigeria for two full years. So I was able to see the full year of the season. So that, in a nutshell, that's what this, all the moving parts. And I like, I've published one book on it and I'm working on my second book now. You know, they're, they're like artist books, not, you know, they're, they're about this work. So does that answer your question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
And then the other question would be, do you have any thoughts about temporary art? And that, that process that, should there be more temporary art throughout the city?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, it's wabasabi. I love the idea that, that there are some things that are transient, like a sandcastle. I, yeah, and, and the transience in my mind would be an important part of the temporariness of it. It, it comes and then it goes. And you can't always make things out of marble.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. If my colleagues have, have more questions, please just hit your hand and I'll go to you. Councilmember Tanaka.
Thank you so much for joining us and for applying. Speaking about temporary art, what did you think of the Black Lives Matter mural that in front of City Hall? What do you think was, was good? Or what do you think wasn't good?
What I thought was good was that they did it. What I thought would have been, as it turned out, the controversy about, about one of the letters, I believe it was the E, the controversy was from this character. I mean, you know, that it wasn't, it wasn't coming from the police. So I would have, I think it was important that it happened. I, I don't know exactly how. I, I thought about it a lot when it came up. You know, what, what would I have done differently? And I can't give you a good answer for it. I would have done something differently. I, I, I don't know quite how, but I'd have made it less, less like an artwork and more like a, a thought experiment, a community thought experience, experience, a shared community experience, because it is, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's all of our problem. Yeah. And this was just almost like a lecture and that, you know, a nice lecture and it was, I, I'm, I'm glad they did it. I'm glad they did it. But I, I'd have, I'd have done it another way. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's a tough one, right?
It is a tough one.
It's a temporary art. And then I'm not sure you heard what happened, like artists didn't want it, it was a temporary art, but then people didn't want it run over, right? So.
Yeah.
How do you deal with that? Like the fact that some artists, it's supposed to be temporary, but then now the street couldn't be driven on, right?
Well, I'd have had, for one thing, I'd have had at least some experienced artists being part of the process, because I'd never have said, you know, go ahead and do that. I mean, you know, artists, they do all that work and then to have it taken away or have cars driving over it, uh-uh, that's not going to work. I mean, anybody who's done public art pieces would have, would have, would have raised a red flag.
Thank you so much. So we're at about 10 minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the timekeeper, so it's all on me. But if you have just kind of a last thought or closing you'd like to leave us with.
If I was selected to be, to be on the commission, I'd be honored to serve. Thank you. I've enjoyed being here. And thank you guys for your questions. It was nice.
Thank you as well.
Bye, you guys.
Thank you. Kim, I believe our next is Harriet Stern.
And she is present, in a promoter to panelist.
Hello. Hi, Harriet.
Oh, hi. Hi, Adrian. Oh, can you see me? Let's see.
We can see you. Thank you so much for your interest in the Public Art Commission. Thanks for the application and for spending some time with us here tonight.
Thanks for having me.
Of course. We'd like to give you a couple of minutes to discuss your background and your interest. And then I'll turn it over to my colleagues for questions. Sounds good?
Okay, great. Yeah, I loved listening to Marilyn. She's so charming. Nine years ago, I applied for this commission. And since then, Palo Alto has come a long way in public art. And that's down to the mayor's office and city council for prioritizing, prioritizing and being forward-thinking about public art. So kudos to you. The master plan's a great document, so I don't think I need to dwell on that tonight. But I do think we should be talking about what is public art today and what it, it should be in this very odd, physical environment we find ourselves in today. And I would like to serve as a commissioner, because I feel that right now, at this moment, public art should be serving our community as, in the form of socially distanced, inexpensive temporary projects happening and events with two goals. One is to boost community spirit and promote cohesion, specifically amongst marginalized groups like teens and seniors. And two, to have a economic, a positive economic impact for local businesses by generating foot traffic. And for example, in lieu of High School Spirit Week, we could create a temporary mural competition for the high schoolers. And we could put those murals up in empty shop fronts around town and maybe even have a celebrity judge. We could create a shock art festival, which is wonderfully colorful and super fun, because participants, participants can be of all ages and abilities. And number three, we could even have a roving photo stand for pet portraits. Everybody could bring out their pets to be photographed and then we could put them up around town. So these are just a few ideas I have about how we can do some temporary activating, energizing activities for Palo Alto. And I also think that we could use our sister cities to, as a, as a touchstone for cultural and artistic activities. So thanks very much.
Very nice. Thank you so much. Councilmember Ness.
So thank you for applying. It's nice to see you here tonight. You started out an answer by mentioning that a first-time visitor comes to Palo Alto and so forth. But what you're indicating is there is lots of art in a whole variety of places and lots of different types of art. So would you be willing to share with us your favorite piece of art in Palo Alto and your least favorite?
Well, I think you got rid of, the, the commission got rid of my least favorite, which was the digital DNA at Litten Plaza. And my favorite is the mural on the side of Country Sun. I just love that. Every time I see it, I feel energized and happy about seeing that. I like to see those Greg Brown murals, too. They're, they give you, there's a lot of whimsy and surprise when you see them. I think everybody likes those. And yesterday, we were driving along on Litten and I saw the, a, like a Martian on the side of a building that I'd never seen before. Sometimes you see things you've never seen before, and that's always great.
Yeah. The Greg Brown was fabulous. Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Lot up the stairs. Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, thank you for applying. You have a very interesting background. You mentioned a couple of places, this idea about creating art with neighboring communities.
Yeah.
And I just wondered how you would envision that working? You know, how would that actually happen?
Yeah. So I was thinking, why don't we reach out to East Palo Alto and work on a mural project with them? There's, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do that. And I think that would, could build a lot of trust and community spirit. And, you know, that's just right there. That's easy. That's number one. I think we could also do a great project with the Tech Computer History Museum in Mountain View. Why not do a technology project with something about citing technology in our space and their space?
Cool. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that question, Mr. Vice Mayor. So what I'm thinking about, you know, you're probably aware of the Black Lives Matter mural that the city initiated this year. It's a temporary piece of public art. I think people would say it's important and a good thing for Palo Alto and started a lot of discussion. I guess my question is like, what do we do next in terms of art and racial justice or prejudice and addressing that? What, what, what should we be looking at next?
Yeah, I was thinking about that. Well, I think also, I think one of the things we can do is, what I just mentioned, is reaching out to underserved communities like East Palo Alto. And how about specifically targeting some of our, you know, like our, our residents that live in mobile homes or, or cars? Maybe we could figure out a way to engage them in the arts and build some bridges. I'm not sure how, but I was actually thinking about doing a photo project with them, maybe about an object, and then having an exhibition in a public space like a library. Of course, this is if, when, once, once we can actually get around and communicate with people. The, the projects I was immediately thinking about were things where we could do at a social distance and safely. Those kinds of projects, I think, are more for the future, when we can actually engage one-to-one. But I think we can do a mural project right away. I don't see a problem with doing that right away with East Palo Alto.
Thank you. I appreciate that a lot. Councilmember Cormac.
Ms. Stern, thank you so much for applying and welcome this evening. And it's fun to see art behind you there.
Yeah.
My question for you is about the percent for art. How important do you think that is in being able to fund the commission and its, and its forward-looking projects? And their proposals to eliminate it? I've heard other people say we should raise it. How, how should we think about the percent for art?
Well, I think that's crucial to the future of public art in Palo Alto. You may be aware that Menlo Park had it and then the council got rid of it. And then the entire Arts Commission walked out after that. And they haven't been able to get it back, this 1% for art. And I don't know if you'd noticed, but they don't have nearly, I mean, they're a smaller community than ours. But they have, they've had a lot of development in the recent years and they don't have any public art at all like ours. So I think it's hugely important that we continue it. And if it does go on hiatus, which I've heard that might be in the future, I think it's going to be hard to get it back. And I do think it's important to continue it. And especially if you consider that the Public Art Commission and the Public Art Program's been going for 45 years in Palo Alto. And that's a pretty big precedent that's already been set. And I think that it can morph. We can use, it doesn't just always have to be a piece of art, a piece of art, a piece of art. We can use art in a different way. And some of these ways I've described to engage the community and create dialogue and promote trust. And, you know, I have a teenage daughter and I was trying to think of how you can use art for teenagers. I mean, they're so dispirited right now and isolated. And I think we could be more nimble and more responsive to our community's needs. And I don't think we just have to spend 80 grand on a piece of art. We can use it for other things.
Thank you so much. Appreciate hearing your thoughts on that.
Thank you very much. Other questions from my colleagues? We have about two minutes left. All right. Well, Hillary, thank you again for, or Harriet, sorry, apologies. Thank you for your application. Do you want to kind of close this out? Any last words, ideas, thoughts?
Well, I want to say thank you to the council and mayor, vice mayor, for the service you're doing to the community. I've been watching the, the council meetings and it's a lot of hard work you're doing. So thank you for that. And I want to say that I'd love to be a commissioner and I would serve with a lot of dedication and passion and commitment. So I think I have something to offer to the commission and the community, and I'd love the opportunity to serve. And I appreciate that Palo Alto has supported the arts for such a long time. And I think that the arts could actually turn around at this weird juncture that we have now and serve our community as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thanks for spending some time with us tonight.
Good night.
Kim, I think we are onto our penultimate applicant, Mia Taylor.
Yes. So Mia is present. And just as a note, Sinia Shen is also present. I'm going to promote Mia right now to panelist. Okay. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you. Thank you for reapplying and thank you for your service on the Public Art Commission. Really appreciate your interest again. We've got about 10 minutes where hopefully you can share a little bit about yourself, some of your work on the Public Art Commission, why you're reapplying, and then I'll go to my colleagues for questions. Sound good?
Fantastic.
Make it aware.
Okay, so I'm Mia Taylor and I am a current commissioner. I've been on the Art Commission for six and a half years. It's hard to believe. It flew by very quickly. I was born and raised in Palo Alto, one of the very few. And, you know, it's changed a lot. And one of the things I always wanted to do is give back to my community. Arts has always been really critical to be the performing public visual, all kinds of art. And I see the value of art, and especially now, the importance of making art accessible, not only visibly accessible, but also economically accessible to people in good times, bad times, and everywhere in between. And I'm an art educator, art activist, arts administrator, and I see the value of art. And the city of Palo Alto has come a long way. Prior to my tenure, there is a lot that happened and there is a lot more going. And I'm so excited to be able to be in the throng of things and see all the exciting things that we've put together. We've won some wonderful awards through the Americans for the Arts. And we're, we're just getting started. We're now, we were doing our jogging phase and now we're, we're sprinting. And I'm excited and I'm looking forward to hopefully continuing this. I'm not going to call it a sprint. I'm going to call it a, and not a dash either, but a, a quick run. There's lots we want to obviously accomplish in the coming years. But it's, it's just amazing to see the dedication, the passion that the current commission has and the city council. And just to see that the city really is beginning to understand and appreciate, I think, the value of public art.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, thank you for applying again. So what, how, how would your fellow art commissioners say you've added value to the art commission?
Good question. I like to ask a lot of questions and I like to push back on people and really question what we're doing and why we're doing it. One of the things that I have, will say that people have been really proud of me for, and I, I'm using that in a unique way, because I don't like to speak about myself. But one of my fellow commissioners said they really appreciate my compassion and desire to change the way we see public art in private development. One of the things that I am really active in talking about is encouraging the spaces in private developments to be more accessible. The public art that they've been creating has been really impressive. And how can we get people to be able to see that? It's a very challenging thing, because a lot of people don't, a lot of private developments don't want people to come onto their, their land, to use that expression. But there's so much great work, that's artwork, that's been created for those spaces. And it would be really great to make it easier and more accessible for the public. And it will bring our community together and it'll also help to trans, I don't know if transcends the right way, but to enable public and private to hopefully join together and cross paths, which is something I'll bring in, the mural has done, the public, the Black Lives Matter mural has done. It brought a lot of people just to talk, whether good and bad. And that's the one thing about public art I love is that it. And that's the one thing about public art I love is that it gets people to talk and communicate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ness.
So thanks so much for being on the commission. Thank you for reapplying. A question, first of all, I have no idea actually how many pieces of art we have that is displayed in Palo Alto. Be interesting if someone else does. But I want to ask you in particular, what your favorite piece of art is? And also, which piece of art you really are not very fond of?
Very good question. Okay, so this is where I'm gonna, I normally, again, don't like to boast, but today I am. I'm very proud of the Black Lives Matter mural and for several different reasons. Number one, I do identify as an African American. My, my father's African American, my mom's European American. And I was actually asked to help lead the project on behalf of the commission. And that was a really meaningful tribute for me to really think about, you know, how I can make a difference in my community. I always think that, you know, the art that I'm helping to put in our public spaces does help the community, which it does. But this wasn't really meaningful, just to see the city council on board and wanting to show that black lives do matter, which is something that's so important, especially in in this day and age. And considering the fact that we do have a really strong group of African Americans in our community who don't always have their voices heard. And for us to be able to show, the, the city to be able to show them that we care about them and we respect them is really important. And the fact too, is that we did get a lot of really wonderful conversation. Some of it was surprising for some people, including myself. But I think it's important to just be able to have art that lets people talk and share ideas and be open to hearing other sides of the story. So the, the artwork, I, it's interesting because there is a lot of artwork, I wouldn't say it'd be my first choice. But this is going to sound cliche, but there's no particular piece that I don't like. I might not, you know, grasp it right away and say, you know, I'm going to take it home with me if I could. But I will say, one of the things, the, a lot of the private art and public development pieces are pieces that I do love, but I wish they were more visible to the public. And I will also say the blue trees is another example. At first I was like, this is really bizarre, you know, to paint trees blue. And I know a lot of other people thought it was a little strange. But once you understand the purpose and the meaning of the public art piece, you really begin to think about why we're doing it. We're not just spending money just to paint trees blue. We're, we want to make a difference and we want people to think outside the box and to think about social issues like deforestation that's happening in our communities and in our world.
Good. Thank you for sharing all that.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Folsa.
Okay, so this can be a little bit touchy feely. So first of all, thank you for doing what you've, what you've done all these years. A little bit of a touchy feely question here. If you go back on the commission, how can we help you in terms of what kind of other people we put on the commission with you? That is, I mean, do you, are you, are you going, boy, I really wish we had an Etruscan sculpture expert, right? Or gee, everybody's so enthusiastic, we need somebody that can sort of calm us down and get us to agree. So how can we help, how can we help you guys on the commission?
Wow, that is a very hard, tricky question. So, you know, it's interesting because I am, I'm an artist, but a very, I would call myself an informal artist. And I am also an activist and I think one of the things I like to, that I think is, when I was initially applying to become a public art commissioner, I thought to myself, I'm not going to be qualified. Nobody's going to want to have me on there. But then I realized, you know, it's not about qualifications. Yes, I do have some background in the arts, but it's really about the community. And we do have Nadia and Elise, who are our trusted advisors, who I've learned a lot from over the last years. And we have commissioners from all walks of life. And, and I think that's one of the most inspiring things, is just have people who are open-minded and are thinking creatively. And how we can continue the wonderful work that we're doing. And I will say right now, we have a fantastic group of commissioners. That I've worked with three different types of groupings of commissioners. And I think this is one of our best groupings yet, primarily because it has a diverse, they're diverse racial and ethnic and religious and age. I'm the youngest. And I think I might have been, might be the only, the youngest of the public art commissioners over the, its history. But there's just a lot of diversity, which I think is more than anything so important. And of course, you know, knowledge and background of art is nice, but I think one of the values of public art is that you don't have to be a scholar in public art. You just have to be able to think, think differently and have fun with it. And I wouldn't, I have to tell you, I don't know what would be, what we need. I think what we need is just an open mind. And I think from the council, just to remember that art matters and public art matters. And I just wrote something for, an article, somebody asked me to help them with, and I said that the arts are essential. And I think that's the biggest key, I could say, from the council. To just remember that the arts are essential and they really do help people in tough times and in good times.
Yeah, I think we'd all agree with that. So we're at ten minutes. I was just hoping you could maybe wrap it up, leave us with a conclusion or a couple last thoughts.
Yeah. And actually, Eric, I'm going to add one other thing to your question. I will say that it's really important that we keep the public art and private, percent for art, excuse me. There's public art and private, which is also important. They're both important. That the city, there's been a lot of studies, and this can be my conclusion. There's been a, a lot of studies and I'm happy to share this with you, although I think we've already shared as the commission with you. That we know that the arts, even in not so good times, it really, in good times, arts help contribute to the economic value of communities. And so people come to, and I, yes, we are public art, but I'm also going to add in performance art, code art, brought in a lot of people from our community and also not our community. And ate at our restaurants, you know, used our parking lots. And so it really, it's a full circle. And that's, I want people to remember that, that the arts bring a lot of different opportunities to create a vibrant future for the city of Palo Alto.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service on the Art Commission and thanks for reapplying. We really appreciate it. I believe we're on to our final applicant for the night, Shinya Shen.
I am promoting her right now to panelist.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you so much for your service on the Art Commission the past few years. And thank you for reapplying. We really appreciate it and spending some time with us tonight. I was hoping you can give us a couple of minutes about your background, what you've enjoyed about the Art Commission and what you'd like to keep working on. And then I'll go to my more some questions. So please.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm Shinya Shen. And I've had the privilege of serving on the Palo Alto Public Art Commission for the last three years as a first-term commissioner. Indeed, it's been an honor to help promote and support the richly diverse public art collection that reflects our community. From the great brown murals that preserved the bucolic aura of another period to the BLM mural that testifies to today's social struggle. In Palo Alto, we have the luxury of public art that speaks to us and sometimes speak on behalf of us. It is with this mindset of openness to embrace diversity and the heavy reminder of the wound that we hope to help to heal that I submit my application for an opportunity to continue to serve as a member of this commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll kick us off with one question. You know, the, the Public Art Commission really shepherded through the Black Lives Matter mural this year, which I think you know, successful, controversial, started a lot of conversations. As we continue to deal with, you know, racial injustice and policing and prejudice in America and Palo Alto, what, what do you think we should do next in terms of public art?
You know, I think we should continue to be dynamic. I'm so proud of Mia and the team for bringing together this collection of African American artists and respond in such a timely manner to bring this conversation publicly to our streets in such a current manner. I mean, I, I, I just couldn't be more proud of Palo Alto. And I think having this ability to respond properly, timely, in response to social affairs, it's, it's, it's really a luxury. And, and so it, it's hard for me to say, you know, what should we be doing next? Because I think a lot of what we should be doing next is just being ready and willing to participate and promote conversations. So which has demonstrated in the BLM mural.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, I'll ask you two questions. I don't know if you heard me ask, Mia, I'll see that same question, which is,
Okay.
What would your fellow art commissioners, how would they say you've added value? And the second question is, what do you think about term limits on commissions?
Yes, I think term limits will be healthy as anything. In the past two months, I've actually spoken up during the city council meeting, during the open speaking sessions, to, to hope to preserve the number of commissioners for this particular commission. And one of the reasons is because obviously this is a volunteer position. And we have such a diverse, a richness of our community that I think to the extent we can get more people to participate, it is a luxury that we could afford. That said, if we, if we don't have, you know, as many seats, it would be great to be able to rotate new members in. You know, I, I just, I love today being able to kind of sit in and listen to additional applicants. I think anybody that's been selected to participate in this meeting will be a wonderful addition to the commission. Hello?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yeah, we have some tough choices. But I, again, the first question, how would your fellow commissioners say you've added value?
I'm a little bit different from the other commissioners in a sense that I'm a trained lawyer. And really, I'm more, more than an artist, I'm an art appreciator. And so what I bring to the process, one of the things I brought to the process, to, to the commission is I've actually worked with, you know, Nadia and the team to put together a binder for doing the meeting. To really highlight the commission's responsibilities when we are conducting the meeting. To add governance to the process. So I see the commissioner, I mean, the commission as really a trust to help shepherd the right decision-making when we're selecting or approving art. Or when we're decommissioning art, deaccessioning art. Rather than me going in and saying, I don't like this piece of artwork. I want to make sure that we create a good process for the community to help this, make a decision about when we should decommission something, when we should approve budget for maintaining something. And well, when we should approve budget for adding something. So I, I, I would say I'm more of a governance person to help build the process and procedure for help promoting and securing, maintaining and decommissioning public art through its life cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Smaka.
Yeah, thank you so much for your service on the commission. I really appreciate it. My question is, you've seen what happened with the Black Lives mural. You know, there's some good things and some things that have been challenging. How would you have done it differently? How do you think the commission could have done this differently? That maybe would have made this better?
I think in all in all, I think the fact that we, and Mia, I mean, I really just, you know, need to give her a thousand kudos for this. Brought this and made this happen in such a short time, made this a timely conversation. And as difficult as some of the response may have been, the fact of the matter is we had this conversation. And sometimes maybe because, because some of the conversation and reaction was difficult, maybe that's exactly the value of it. So because I think sometimes in the struggle to reach perfection and harmony, we end up not bringing the conversation to the public, which would have been a misfortune.
Thank you. If my colleagues have additional questions, please hit your hands. We have about three minutes left. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Thank you so much, Ms. Shen, for being here and for serving. My question is about temporary art just in general. What, what are your thoughts about how we could do more of that throughout Palo Alto and, you know, the various locations?
So actually, one of the, one of the conversations that came up recently was, I think we were getting a license for some artwork that would be displayed in different places. And one of my responses was, I looked at the, the artwork. Unfortunately, I don't have the name in front of me immediately. But I was looking at the artwork and I said, okay, so here's a collection of twenty and we can license five. Is it possible for us to license all twenty of them and get a very broad license? So anyone and everyone within the city of Palo Alto that wants to print it out and, and, you know, tape it to their window, kind of like the teddy bears that people would go around and find it. If we can, you know, put this, all these messages, these very positive or thought-provoking messages, put them on the window and turn it into a bit of a treasure hunt, you know, a teddy bear hunt. You know, you know, get the different organizations inside Palo Alto involved. And people can print them out and kind of turn their living rooms and externalize that and bring people to their living rooms from walking outside. I thought that would be a good opportunity. So we're, you know, I, those are some of the ideas I had to essentially bring the insides of people's homes to become galleries as we walk the streets, particularly during this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So we have just about a minute left. I was hoping you could leave us with any final thoughts or conclusions.
Well, first of all, thank you for your service. Thank you for your stewardship. I'm very proud, as a resident of Palo Alto, I'm very proud of being a member. And I'm just so grateful for your service. And I want to say that Palo Alto, I know one of the things that, like many cities during this difficult time, we've had to look at our budget process very carefully. And one of the things that we're reconsidering is the percent for arts. And I, I want to really advocate for, for our preserving that. Because I think on, on the surface, it looks like something that could potentially be a conservative, you know, a, a, an item that could help conserve the budget. In actuality, I don't think it will and because of the multi-year nature of this process. And I think it is a luxury that people that are willing to come to Palo Alto and invest in Palo Alto could afford. So I would definitely, you know, want to use this, this short time to advocate for that.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. Thank you for your service and for reapplying. And I believe the percent for art comes to council in a couple of weeks, so feel free to show up and speak up. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes our one item, our one special order of the day. We now go to oral communications where members of the public may wish to speak to any item not on the agenda. So if you wish to speak to an item not on the agenda, i.e. our board and commission interviews, please raise your hand. And the clerk can help you provide your comments.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I do see one speaker, Rob Lovinsky. Would you, how many minutes would you like to allow for public comment?
Let's do two minutes, please.
You got it. So, Rob Lovinsky.
Hello, this is Rob Lovinsky. I just wanted to comment for a couple of minutes about what happened two weeks ago when the council spent four hours, pretty much the whole evening, discussing the status of an oak tree on the twenty-three-hundred block of Webster Street. And the question is, why did that even make it to the council and why wasn't this dealt with at a lower level? Well, for twenty years, Dave Doctor was posted to the planning department as the arborist. Well, for 20 years, Dave Docter was posted to the planning department as the arborist. And he would meet developers, they'd bring their drawings to the counter and they'd lay the drawings out. Dave would look for trees and guide the developer on how to design around nature. That was his philosophy, designing around nature. And what happened for 20 years, he was successful in doing that and guiding people in their designs. But Dave kind of got pushed out. And since then, there's been kind of a lack of integrity for the tree ordinance. I call it a tree ordinance in name only. And so I think we need to have a stronger focus again on enforcing the tree ordinance and not just as a bookkeeper or book reader who says, well, you can chop 25% of the roots and you'll be okay. Because you may not be okay. And what would have happened on the Webster Street is Dave would have said, you don't have a right to the basement unless you can prove that there's no roots there. And so the person would have to spend a couple thousand dollars to get the ground penetrating radar study and you know whether or not there's a root there or not. It's a similar situation that's happened with Castelaya where there's a dozen oaks and redwoods that are protected that have been sort of pushed aside, not even studied because they were deemed, quote, less than significant by the planning department. So they didn't end up in the EIR, in the Biological Resources section. Anyway, I just want you to say, let's try to reinvigorate the arborist position in planning so we don't have this happening anymore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Benascha Irani. Pardon me if I mispronounced that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. It's a little muffled, but we can hear you.
Taylor, can you hear me? This is Benascha.
Benascha, we can hear you. It's a little difficult, but why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. So I'm gonna be talking a little bit about the issue on our 101 exit on University Avenue. This has been going on for a while now. And I wrote about it in the Western Park Independent Association. And 50 people asked me to do something about it since they brought up the issue. And we have sent you a photo of what the exit looks like. There's graffiti, there's trash, there's weeds, there's dirt. And we are one of the most affluent neighborhoods in the Bay Area. And when you look at the freeway, it does not represent Western Park. Well-maintained, beautiful, large, extremely clean neighborhood. And I think, like even the other exit on University Avenue, the landscaping has never been completed. There's trash there and now there's a big plastic fence. I'm really making up a plastic fence has been added, which does not represent our neighborhood as a true way. So I would like to request the board and the City Council to help remove the graffiti, trash, weeds, the landscaping, and maybe the sign saying, please do not litter. And maybe that could be for the Art Commission, who would say, yeah, they could put something like that out there. And I will say that the city of Memorial Park in the meantime has had a newly constructed freeway, so no roads, no trash, landscaping. And that's why I brought it up. So I'm hoping you guys can help us bring us to kind of like bring it up and make it, make something happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Benascha. It was rather hard to hear you. And you may have mentioned you sent an email, but I'd suggest, please, please just send us one again, city.council@cityofpaloalto.org. I think that might help you. You may have been speaking about University Avenue, some of the trash. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, exactly. I didn't know if you saw, she did send in an email and it was explicitly about the, it's the 101, which I'm not sure if that's in Palo Alto or not, but everybody can check out the email.
We'll go take a look. I think that concludes our oral communications. And so with that, we are at the end of our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for our shortest Monday meeting in many, many months. We are adjourned at 8:16. Hope you all have a nice evening. And thank you to the clerk for running this for us. Thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.